Because it's terrible. I'll be on it.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the inland wetlands Water Course Commission to honor. The date is June 4th, 2025. The time is 7 o'clock. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, to unite states and to one nation under God.
Roll call. Ally?
Eileen McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Danper Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nakio.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Okay, going on to the minutes of the May 7th meeting. Any comments regarding the minutes? Entertain a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting on May 7th, 2025, be accepted as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Call for a vote. You were absent. Ally?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. But Nick will be voting tonight as a regular member. Now, before I get into the meeting tonight, I want to discuss with the group an item or two. We got bombarded with all these after emails and reports and all this stuff that we've been trying to do away with after the Fridays. If they're not in the Friday packet, they don't do us a lot of good, especially handed out today during day. So, we had a, I want to establish a policy, subject to approval of the commission, that any information that's handed out past Friday in the packet, that application will not be acted upon on Wednesday night. Now, is that, is that in agreement with everybody? Ally?
Yes, I agree with that.
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Absolutely, yes.
Jeff?
Yep.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Now, also, because one of the reasons is, is the last few meetings, the episodes, have been very embarrassing for me to have all this confusion going on that should be taken care of in the staff office. And speaking of embarrassment, I've got to tell you that I talked to Erin last week, and we talked about an applicant, and it was a difficult conversation. I said, what do you want the commission to do? And she told me she wanted the commission to embarrass the gentleman on television. And I kind of lost it because she's done that before, and I went ballistic a little bit, and then I said, that is not what this commission does. That's not our function here. I think everybody's in agreement. If not, speak up. So, unfortunately, I wanted to start it because if there's any applicants in here, they won't get approved tonight with information that has been punched out since Friday. Okay. Going on to old business, application A-193.7, East Center Street?
Not ready.
Okay. Application A-253.1, 142 Hope Hill Road, Town of Wallingford?
As it says on the agenda, they've withdrawn.
I'm sorry, Debbie?
It's noted on the agenda, they have withdrawn their application.
I'm sorry, I didn't see it there. I apologize. Withdrawn. Okay. Application A-27.1, 5 and 21 Tully's Road, soil remediation, request for the release of the last two bonds?
Yes, my environmental planners' report went out in the packet. I visited the site last week. They were instructed not to come because everything went very smoothly, as you saw in the report. And actually, this is, they were going to use it as a poster child for a successful remediation. This was a two-acre site with nickel contamination, and a lot of trees came down, and it was in a floodplain by a river. It was sad to see, but it's, as you can see in the pictures, things are coming back, and they're doing the monitoring, and everything is looking real good.
Question, when you said it's a poster child, is it a poster child for Pfizer or a poster child for DEP? Because they're the ones that kind of pushed them to get the remediation done.
I was speaking more in terms of the consulting firms that were involved.
Okay. Just, I was just curious. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to release the bonds?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on application A-20-7.1, Tully's Road, Wharton Brook, Pfizer Incorporated, the bonds of sedimentation and erosion control bond of $33,000 and the wetlands plantings bond of $75,000 be released.
Motion made, is her second?
Second.
Second? Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Application five, number five, application A-254.2, 360 Woodhouse Avenue.
Did you, Mr. Chairman, did you purposely skip one, or?
Oh, I missed Parker Farms. I did not purposely, thank you.
Okay.
Application 20, 254.1, 177 Parker Farms Road, Hector Baez, above ground pool?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Name for the record, please?
Yes, Hector Baez.
What's the story, Erin? What's going on?
Okay, this, my report went out in the packet, and also you got the application the month before in the May packet. So, we've been busy, Mr. Baez and I have been busy since the original application, because information kept on changing and so on, both in what he wanted to do, but also some information came to light about the history on his property. I don't know how much detail you want me to go into, Mr. Chairman, about what we found out about the wetland there, or?
Well, I think you can summarize it up pretty quickly about the, what ended up happening, or what we think happened.
Okay. And Mr. Baez wants to put in, first he wanted to put an above-ground pool in the ground, and he dug a hole to that effect, but then he found out that that involves, you can do it, but involves a lot of work and a lot of extra equipment and so on for the pool. So, he decided to go with a regular above-ground, and that's what you have today, is the regular above-ground application. But what happened with the wetlands is, we were using wetlands from the file, from 1996, that run along the south side of the property, south side of the lot. And I went out there, and they're grass, but I see that a lot, you know, over the years, but I still assumed it was a wetland. But then I realized, it was, it was always dry every time I went out there, even after rains. And looking closer at the map he handed in, which you have in your packet, there's a 30-foot-wide town drainage easement right through that wetland. So, I, when I found a united concrete, I don't really know what it's called in the back, this big, Nick probably knows what it's called, a round unit in the back with pipe, that I realized that that's what was going on, and that when the town put in that drainage equip, facility, the wetland disappeared. It got filled, it's gone. At this point, I'd been working with Mr. Baez for two months now, and we're just going with it. But, but there's a case in point where we don't, we historically don't, may have most homeowners hire a wetland scientist to go out, and we rely on file information. It was right there in the file, the planning and zoning file, so we used it. But here's a case in point where it didn't, you know, it's not always what you think it is. And anyway, but tonight, I guess we're going to go ahead and treat it as if it's a wellen, because on the files, it is a wetland. And he had done all the work anyway, and I had done all, most of the work anyway. So, here we are.
So, I think Erin and I discussed the language in the recommendation, and it's, it's really based on what we think happened. There's not a lot of proof, but it makes sense that when the drainage line went in, the storm drainage line went in, whoever put it in the town or contractor, that would naturally tend to drain the surrounding area around it. So, any questions, commissioners? Nick? Deb? Mike? Jeff?
No.
Jimmy?
No.
Ally?
No.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny, well, this is, I'll entertain a motion to significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A-25-4.1, 177 Parker's Farm Road, Hector Baez, installation of above, above-ground pool be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. I entertain a motion to approve or deny this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A-25-4.1, 177 Parker Farms Road, Hector Baez, above-ground pool be approved with the condition of approval that erosion control measures are installed properly in place immediately, and meet the approval of the environmental planner prior to any further work being conducted on site.
Motion made, second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Start with Jeff this time. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. All set. Okay. Okay. Now, we'll go on to A-254.2, 360 Woodhouse Avenue. Good evening. Name for the record, please. Address?
I'm Eris Ali Tello at 360 Woodhouse Ave.
Navi Tello at 360 Woodhouse Ave.
Okay. Erin, there's, there's a lot more going on than just this after-the-fact application, isn't there, on this app, on this property?
What was the question? I'm sorry, there's a lot going on.
No, no, set? Good, thank you.
What was the question about?
Well, there's a lot going on, on this property.
Yes.
I don't think it's, it's, after-the-fact permit doesn't fit this application right at the moment.
Okay. I will just point out that back in the fall, Mr. Tello was asked, was told to take the chicken coop in the shed out of the wetlands and put it somewhere else. So, part of the current application that we're, in this agenda item we're on now, is to relocate those facilities.
Yeah, but you got a cease and desist going on, on this property.
We got even more. We got notice of violation and a cease and desist.
I don't see any sense in trying to act on this after-the-fact permit.
Right, to, to do it all at once, or?
Right.
See how it plays out. Right.
Right. So, you, I don't know what the, the commission, the cease and desist, you got a lot of activities going on out there. You got a lot of things going on. You got a lot of work to get straightened out before we think any kind of after-the-fact permit that's going to be issued.
I mean, that's why we came tonight here, to see what, what I can do.
We're not going to tell you what you have to do. You already know what you did that you shouldn't have done, because you've been this, you've been there before. You had this after-the-fact permit, it's because you did things that weren't approved at the time. So, now you did more things that are not approved. So, you want to work with here? You want to work with a soil scientist? You want to work with an engineer? But I think we're, cease and desist was going to stay in effect unless the commission's got another feeling. Nick?
I'm just concerned, Erin, why, why is there a new application for next month with this piece of property, when we have outstanding violations that need to be cleared up?
Okay, good question.
I need it in a 60-second remark, okay?
Yes, good question. I, legally, I am obligated to take any application that walks in the door. That's, that's a statutory thing. I can't turn people away. So, you'll notice there's the one you're, we're dealing with right now, and then further down under the new applications, Nick, I think you're referencing, there's another one that came in on the same property, and on the back, we have a notice of violation on this property, and we have a cease and desist here, a cease and desist order, and we have to hold an official hearing. And maybe we're going to do that right now.
Why are we looking at new applications when the existing violation has not been handled?
No, I understand. We can table it. The commission should just table it. You're right. We got to get, there's too much going on, and that's finally how it worked its way up to a cease and desist. It was just too, it was like whack-a-mole. So, it, that's why we have a cease and desist order that went out on, like, verbal order on Friday and a written order Monday.
But these applications have a 30-day timeframe on it, whether we accept it, review it, and make a decision.
It's actually 65 days, and then the applicant can ask the commission for another, to grant the commission another 65. So, it buys time. We've, we've got time to work it out, I hope.
Okay. As long, I've never seen it done this way before. We, we've never gone further with a violation until the violation was cleared up, and then the new application came in, and we addressed that new application. All of a sudden, now you've got a big pile here of everything, and, and for me, I sat at the kitchen table today for an hour, trying to figure out what you're trying to do.
No, I understand. It's, it's-
You understand, why did you do it?
It's confusing, because some of the things, some of the improvements are not a violation. In other words, you would approve them, but some of them are all tangled up with violations. So, I, I don't know. We, maybe we shouldn't do this, this way. I'll, I'll seek guidance from the law department if that was the wrong way to approach it.
You don't need the law department involved. For 30-some years, the way this permission's been doing it has worked fine. All of a sudden, now, everything's got to have the law department involved? No. We need to decide, take, withdraw these applications, tell him to clear up the violation in the beginning with the foundation from the chicken coop, and the other small structure that was there, come back to us with an application to, to do what he wants to do next. As far as I'm concerned, I don't want to see anything he wants to do until the original violation is cleared up. That's my own personal opinion, so.
If I may, sorry. He will move that chicken coop. He's totally in understanding that we have to move the chicken coop in the shed, which will be done. He wanted to make it clear that we will be moving that last. One second. So, he can do the new application. He could do the drainage after he moves the chicken coop in the shed. That is totally fine. We're, we will move those, and then we can move through with the drainage.
You told us last year, when you came in, you were here for the violation, which was the foundation for the chicken coop and the structure itself.
Yes.
And we asked you to take them down, remove them, and then we'd hear what your presentation was to what you wanted to do next. We're not, you're not here to tell us what you're going to do. We're here to tell you what you've got to do. The Chicken Coop Foundation and that small building have got to go before I see anything else on that piece of property.
Absolutely. So, the understanding that we had after our meeting, when you approved the pool, was that we would build the pool and then move the two structures, which is in plan still.
Did this commission approve of that?
From what our understanding was, yes.
Did we approve this drainage piping that you have installed?
No, that's totally separate.
Well, you, that, you're, so you can't, you got to fill a hole back in?
Yes, and he has.
Well, you, you got to work things out. We, we're not going to sit here and try to iron out something that you've been here multiple times before for the issue. I, I think the commission should leave the cease and desist in order and table everything else. Is that, does that entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, as a matter of bookkeeping, could you officially open the cease and desist hearing, reference the cease and desist order that was sent out Monday, and then allow, you can speak, and then allow them to speak?
Hang on a minute. Make a motion to table this until things get resolved. Start with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A-25-4.2, 360 Woodhouse Avenue be tabled.
I'll second.
Second, motion made and seconded.
No, she doesn't have to specify.
Okay. Nick, you agree, the most, there's a motion on the floor, on the, the motion has been made and seconded to table the application.
Voice is seconded. All right, Mr. Nakio.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes. Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. Now, Erin, for bookkeeping purposes, the cease and desist needs a, needs a hearing to be opened up. So, at 7:22, we're opening up a cease and desist hearing for 360 Woodhouse Avenue. New unpermitted activities and noncompliance with permit, et cetera. Okay. I'll have the applicant or the person who is here representing the property, your name, please, again for this hearing?
My name's Eris Ali Tello.
So, in, in, the commission got any, well, I think Erin has indicated, and we've got documentation indicating, that there's a lot of activities going on associated with this. So, I'll entertain a motion to leave the cease and desist order in place.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the cease and desist order on 360 Woodhouse Avenue near Eriotello be left in place.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. I think it's good, the direction it's going, but is there also a directive to this applicant as to what they need to get done, renewed applicant, directive?
I don't think, I think what they need to get done is hire somebody that can put all this mess together, because the mess is too big for us to try and decipher, we'll say, tonight. Somebody's got to analyze that this is in violation, this might have been approved, this drainage doesn't go there, it's affecting wetlands downstream or drying wetlands. Somebody's got, it's not us.
No, you, you don't pick the person, but I think what you have said to them needs to be understood as incorporated into this discussion. As to why, you got to take care of the things that you have created before you can move forward with your project. And-
That's what I'm trying to do.
I think what the chairman just said to you was something that you have to take to heart. You need someone who knows the laws, knows the regulations, that can help you get back on track to do what you really want to do, because right now, you're, you're really bound up with things you have done and need to correct, so you can continue on. So, yeah, I think the chairman's directive there, I would call it a directive, is vital that you pay attention to it.
Absolutely. And we, trust me, we don't want to come here and bombard you with photos or anything like that. It turned into a huge mess, and what we want to do is fix it. So, we will do whatever we have to do to not have to come in front of you guys and do all of this.
Okay. Just for, for the record, Jim, Jim Heilmann's comments were very well taken. Even though being an alternate, I'd like him to be in the record of the hearing as the commission's request or commission's guidance. Is that okay, Jim?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay. Call for a vote, then? Jeff?
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
I would like to know if motion could be made all over.
And we have no idea what you're saying.
Could the motion be made over again?
Bring it right up close, dear, please. Bring the microphone right up close.
I'm here.
Okay.
Could the motion be made again? Ms. Phillips had started it.
I believe the motion was made to keep the cease and desist in place.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. Be left in place. Seconded was Mr. Nakio. Correct.
Yes.
Yeah. Call for a vote now. Jeff?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Could, Mr. Chairman, could we give some specific directives?
Jim Heilmann gave them the guidance that they, they need.
Outside help, like a, a surveyor, engineer?
With your assistance, without your assistance. They need outside help.
Okay.
Erin, what doesn't, what, I, I don't understand what they don't understand about, when they, first time they came in here, we told them to get rid of the chicken coop in the small structure building. If they had cleaned up the chicken coop and the building, they could, all this stuff would have fell right into place. But now she comes tonight and tells me she wants to do it at the end. That's not going to work. I want to see that Chicken Coop Foundation and the small building gone, because it was never approved to put it there. So, what's the difficulty in giving her a directive?
I'll share, I'll share that with you. I wondered that myself. Because they're using the area, they want to put the chicken coop in the shed, they're using it as a construction laydown area with lumber and, and pavers and concrete piles and gravel piles. It's a construction site, so they can't, they're waiting till all their construction is done, then they want to move the two things. But that leads to the next problem. They've done construction beyond what was approved by this commission, and no, and with missing building permits for a lot of it. So, it's, there's a lot of issues going on here, and they need a survey, because things went beyond the pool, way beyond the pool. The hot tub and the patio, they've got an enormous patio with eight drains, and all sorts of things going on up there, so.
You've got a lot of work to work with them on.
Yes.
Okay, all set.
Thank you.
Okay. Application A-255.1, 2 Research Parkway, Food Share.
Hi.
Hang, hang on a minute. Please wait, hang on a minute. Hold there?
So. I have a cord from the library.
It's supposed to be a microphone right there.
That's for the benefit of the camera.
This one's too large for my ear. I can't even get it to stay in. I have to hold it in.
Portable.
All right. Okay. Yes, good evening. Microphone, very important microphone.
Good evening.
And we're all hard of hearing, because we're old, and so, and name and address.
Sure. Tino Rivero, Connecticut Food Share, 2 Research Parkway.
Hang on a minute, there's, they're going on here.
Someone just speak.
Hello?
You all set?
I don't know if I can use this unit either, but I will try. Go ahead.
Could you all list your names, so we can get it recorded, please?
Again, Tino Rivero, Connecticut Food Share. Again, Tino Rivero, Connecticut Food Share.
Ian Cole, soil scientist of record, Middletown, Connecticut.
Michael Romano, commercial development company.
Megan Miller, Civil One, project manager for this project.
Okay.
Good evening. Okay, thank you so much for your time. Again, Megan Miller with Civil One, the site civil engineers for this project. I'd like to start by passing this over to Tino, who can tell you a little bit about the existing property, the Connecticut Food Share, and then we'll take it over and talk about the site and our improvements.
Okay, just as I've told other people, you, you haven't had the pleasure of being here. We don't want a planning and zoning application, we want a wetland application. So, focus on the issues at hand, the wetlands.
We can step right into?
Sure, absolutely. If you don't mind, I'm gonna go over to the map.
That's probably a good place. Just the microphone is the issue.
You each could re-identify yourselves when you first speak next, that would help.
I'm gonna try my best here, can everyone hear me? Yes, okay.
Your name?
Megan Miller, Civil One.
Okay.
So, the property is?
Hang on, hang on, lifesavers here.
Oh, thank you.
They were hiding it.
Thank you so much. Is it on? Can you hear me now? Okay. Megan Miller, Civil One, beautiful. Okay, thanks, guys. This property is two Research Prop, two Research Parkway. It is nine point six four acres located in the Watershed Interchange District. It is currently occupied by the Connecticut Food Share, which is an organization that helps distribute food to local food pantries, additional soup kitchens, and people in need. So, it's a distribution and office space. The proposed application is for a building addition into increase. So, the proposed building addition is approximately thirty-four hundred square feet, sorry, thirty-four thousand square feet. Additional parking lot will be adding sixty-one spaces and additional shipping and receiving bays, which is four in total, new ones, while maintaining the existing shipping bays. The total impervious area for new for this property is thirty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-one square feet. The property is a unique property, which is bordered by four sides of streets. We have Barnes Road, which is Route sixty-nine, sorry, sixty-eight to the south, Thorpe Ave to the west, Joseph Carini Drive to the north, and then Research Parkway to the east. There. In orange is the proposed building addition. And on the north side of the property is, we're moving the existing driveway towards Joseph Carini Drive while putting a new driveway entrance off of, off of Joseph Carini Drive for truck access only. The access from Research Parkway will be, continue, and the research, oh, sorry, the Thorpe Avenue driveway will be expanded to allow for truck exiting and maneuvering. Over here, on the south side of the property, is the new parking area. And then, on the north side of the property, are the additional loading bays and tractor-trailer parking areas. The property has three existing detention basins. And I'm sorry, I got a little started. The property was originally permitted and built in two thousand and fifteen. So, there were no wetlands on the property, and that's why this, this application has never been in front of this commission before. We are before this commission because of the existing detention basins were classified as wetland area. We have our soil scientist Ian Cole here, who will be talking about the, the existing condition and the impact to those areas after this application process. So, the existing system for stormwater consists of three detention basins. The one to the west handles only roof leaders. And then there is a stormwater sand filter bottom, which handles all the water from the impervious area, from the driveway, from the parking area. This is part of the requirement of the Watershed Interchange District. And then while water fills up this area, it then discharges into a swale and then into this existing basin over by Barnes Road. For larger storm events, water does overflow into an over, outlet control structure, which then discharges into the town and state drainage system. Our proposed sys, proposed drainage system is going to maintain that existing drainage system, cause it's rather, it's already there, while also improving upon it. So, new stormwater from the proposed addition is going, going to continue to go into the detention basin that is only for roof. To do that, we do need to modify that existing basin by making it a little bit larger. Runoff from the parking area and from the driveway, half of it is gonna go into this underground system, which is a two hundred and fifty-five units of ADS storm tech. These are these plastic chambers that go underground. There will be a liner to not allow for infiltration into the soils because that's, stormwater hasn't been treated yet. It's more of just a holding cell to take water, slow it down before we go and treat it. The other water will be going into the existing catch basins and into a new oil grit separator, which then gets discharged into this sand filter basin. There are the two oil grit separators, which is a requirement from the sewer company. One is existing, it will be, remain, and the, there is one new one which will handle the additional impervious area. The detention basin by Barnes Road will not be modified at all. It is still going to maintain in existing conditions. There is a swale that will be, remain, the same, not going to be modified. And the sand filter basin will not be changed at all as well. Let me go back to the regulated areas, why we are here. So, we have identified two regulated activities. The first one being the new impervious area being over twenty thousand square feet. It's located in orange, right over here. And then the second one is the grading, the excavation, and the clearing and grubbing and for plantings for extending the detention system and for also a little bit of the parking area and driveway that is located within fifty feet of the wetland. We plan to mitigate any impacts by an extensive soil erosion control plan. All inlets will be protected by silt sacks and filter, and staked hay bales. Staked hay bales and silt vents will be placed around the existing detention basins that are located within our property area where we're doing the work. The one on the south will be protected by a line of, of silt, silt fence. So, no work again is happening over in this area, and no regulated activity is located within that fifty feet. We have proposed two sediment, temporary sediment traps. They're located here and here. They have been designed for the Connecticut Stormwater Manual and the Soil Erosion Control. Water will fill up this up where it will, sediment will settle, water will infiltrate into the soils, and then it will be routinely maintained during construction. A schedule of maintenance has been added onto the plan for maintaining these stormwater systems during construction, along with an operation and maintenance control for after construction. That has been updated for all existing and proposed stormwater features on the site, including pipe outlets, pipe inlets, and the existing basins. Additionally, one of the comments from staff was, how will we maintain this, this active and existing site during construction? Especially where, where does the stormwater go? The existing systems will continue to go as they currently are. And the only mitigation over here is because we are expanding this existing basin, we have proposed a temporary diversion berm. So, the, the eastern side of that berm will remain and in place. So, no stormwater will be going into the other side while we excavate and dig out and expand that stormwater system. Once that expanded stormwater system is complete and vegetated and established, at that point in time, they will remove that berm. And in our construction sequence, this is the first item that will happen after we establish our soil erosion controls. So, the idea is that we construct this basin, get it ready and stabilized to handle the new impervious area, and then we come and construct the new building addition. So, that will mitigate any erosion and sediment from entering the existing stormwater system. We feel that that is, will mitigate any impact to the existing system while still maintaining water quality. At this time, I'm going to pass it over to Ian Cole to discuss the existing wetland area and the proposed impact.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Ian Cole, professional soil scientist, professional wetland scientist, soil scientist of record. I completed a delineation of the site this past March in support of these site improvements. As was discussed earlier, in two thousand and fifteen, the site was constructed. If you went to go look at aerial photos, basically from wall to wall, the site was cleared down and was basically a giant building pad. As part of that development, there's a series of stormwater features in the southern end of the site that were constructed. The two lower basins, as was previously described, they basically, you know, sit low enough in the, into the ground and are vegetated with wetland plants like fox edge, slender path rush, carax cornada, soft rush. You know, basically a, a, a wetland community plan of, you know, what will you find in a typical man-made wet basin. The swale that was talked about and the infiltration sand basin, these are not wetland features. In my opinion, you know, looking at them off the cuff, I don't even think they're functional. It looks like most of the water kinda sits here and just goes right into the wet basins. And these things, I believe, in my opinion, you know, this proposed addition is gonna provide an opportunity to address and fix this issue so that everything is functioning properly. So, it's gonna be a benefit to it. In terms of, you know, functions of, of these two features, you know, they're man-made features, they didn't exist prior to two thousand and fifteen. And, you know, their function is, as you would expect, to renovate and treat stormwater quality leaving the site. And, you know, the, the project is gonna carry that forward, meeting all the state guidelines for the stormwater quality guidelines. So, in, in my opinion, you know, these meet technical definitions of a wetland by virtue of the fact that they're wet enough to, to establish a wetland community. But the other features, if you were to go there today, they're, they're full of mugwort, basically, and they're completely dry. There looks like there's little, if any, water exchange migrating through those two other parts of the system.
I believe the sand filter was for the benefit of the drinking water supply of Towne Wallyford.
Yeah.
You were right in the watershed, one of the primary reservoirs.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, the point you just made, I think, is interesting, at the very least. I, Erin, I see a huge amount of impervious surface for this entire project. And just mentioned for the first time in this presentation was an inoperable recharge. And recharge has been an important concern for the commission for many, many years. And there was no wetlands here before, but there certainly was a cornfield. Now, you guys may not know that, you don't live here, we do. My point is, we have no recharge taking place here. You have a huge underground galley, but you've mentioned that it's sealed, good thing, cause there's nothing good about the water going in there. But you have an enormous rooftop, which you're not taking advantage of with clean water that could be used for recharge. You have additional parking spaces you've put in. Maybe you might wanna consider taking that roof water, which is basically clean, and put it into a recharge system similar to what you've created for the bad water, except allow it to go into a situation, and I'm sure you will find in that farm field, the, the, it can absorb quite a bit of water. I would like to see the incorporation of some recharge, which will help any wells in the area and certainly do what nature has intentions of doing here, not complete roofs. So, very strong, I'd make that recommendation.
May I address it? Again, Megan Miller, Civil One. The stormwater does recharge into the surrounding soils after it's been treated. So, the infiltration of the roof is going into a basin where it currently infiltrates into the soils and will continue to do so. The excess water, and to Ian's point, there's an outlet pipe that goes from that roof leader into the grass swale. During our inspection and our investigation, we realized that it was constructed incorrectly from the original design. So, it actually is back pitched. So, the water currently just goes in a cycle from the catch basin into that roof leader basin, and then back, and back, and back. So, part of our proposal is to fix that pipe. So, that water is going to discharge into the swale, where it will infiltrate as it travels into the additional large basin over by Route sixty-eight, where it will infiltrate into the surrounding soils. So, infiltration is part of our design. The only reason why we're not infiltrating in those chambers underground is because of the watershed interchange district. We have to treat that water and clean it up before we allow it to go back into the soils. And so, that is just really a holding tank. Once, in smaller storm events, it's gonna go right into an oil grit separator and then into that sand filter basin where, again, infiltration will happen, but also it's cleaning, it's a treatment for water quality. And then, so as it's infiltrating into that system, additional stormwater then goes into a pipe, which then takes it into our largest above-ground existing system over by Route sixty-eight. So, there is infiltration throughout the entire project of only clean water. The only reason why we have that liner is just because we need to treat it through the sand filter basin.
Well, with all the sophistication of computer technologies, how about a little bit statistical data on the characteristics of what you're describing? Could that be done? I mean, what is your percentage of the area that is impacted by impervious surfaces? What would it naturally absorb versus what you are doing with it? That's all part of the soil information.
Yes.
So, I would certainly appreciate that.
Absolutely. A stormwater management plan was provided for the town for the review. It was also reviewed by the sewer company, and they had no concerns with it. We did conduct soil testing out there in the area of the existing system along with, on the bank between the existing building and the existing basin that is for the roof. We had infiltration rates of one inch in five to ten minutes, so that's rather quick.
Okay, appreciated. But what I, I think is needed for the commission at large here is, what we are describing now is the threshold of wetland concerns, seriously. And I'd appreciate that being part of any future presentations that you do because that's critical to wetlands and resource areas.
Noted, thank you.
You okay, Jim?
Yeah, all set, thank you.
Jeff, questions? Mike?
No questions.
No questions.
Where in your reports is, are, is the increase from the runoff of the roofs and the additional parking? Is that in your report? Because I couldn't find it.
It is located, it's summarized in this table, which is located in the narrative. We're decreasing the offsite flows.
Now, originally, in two thousand and fifteen, this was designed, what's there now? Is this, this system sized for the increase in the roof runoff and the additional parking?
Okay, yes. So, the original plan was designed from BL companies. And as part of the design and their approval process, they needed to decrease the flows off the site from what was previously there, which is that cornfield. So, that system, they designed it to- So, that system, they designed it to decrease, we call it peak rate attenuation. So, part of our analysis was modeling BL's existing, what was actually built, and then running it and comparing it to it. So, BL, their design decreased the rates off of that undeveloped lot. Our design further decreases the rate off of the existing. So, it's still a net negative from pre-predevelopment.
Because from 2015 to 2025, our weather has changed here. We have more intense storms with more rapid flow. So, I just was looking for the numbers to see if there was room there to put your addition into it and still make it work properly. And the gentleman up there is telling us now that the two on North Road aren't even working.
It's an overflow pipe. So, it's still used, being used to detain in water. Ultimately, for very large storm events, it does push out and gets into that system by that road. It's just for smaller storm events, the water currently is just going back into that system where it's, again, infiltrating into the water, into the surrounding soils. It's not overflowing and topping out and going into the road. We've never had any issues on the site. However, ultimately, for very, very large storm events, it would get to those, that lower system. But when we're now doing our analysis and we see a problem and it wasn't constructed to how it was previously designed, we're going to fix that. So, our proposed improvements would improve upon BL's existing plan. Again, net decrease for all storm events up to the 100-year storm event. Additional treatment, you are absolutely correct, there have been larger storm events since this was originally permitted, and also revisions to the Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. Initially, treatment was only for one inch, which was when this was permitted. It was the first flush, we call it, which was one inch, which is where we find the most oils and particles and sediments. And that's our water quality, and we always have to treat that. Since this was originally permitted, that has been increased from one inch to 1.3 inches. And we have taken on the current standards for the Stormwater Quality Manual. Additionally, to your storm events, they also change the storm distribution. So, it used to be SES Type III distribution for a 24-hour storm. Now, it's the NCRS Curve D. It's a more intense storm. And so, that was also taken into consideration for our design.
Thank you. Ally?
Nothing.
Erin?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions?
Hang on a minute. Hang on a minute. I got a question for you, Erin. They talked about not having a wetland permit in 2015.
No, they have a wetland permit.
They didn't need a wetland permit? They weren't over 20,000 square feet on that building?
No, I'm saying they did get a wetland permit.
They did get one?
Yeah.
Okay. They said there wasn't any.
Apologies.
I didn't recall 10 years ago, maybe five years ago, I would have remembered 10 years ago.
They said there was no wetlands on the property.
They also said they didn't need a permit 15 years ago, but she corrected us. Go ahead, Erin.
Right. There was no wetlands on the property then, in 2015. You're correct. But because you were creating, or they were creating, I don't know, I'm talking to a big building, it was, it tripped the wire on the 20,000 square feet of impervious surface area. That's why they needed a wetland permit in 2015 for the surface area. There weren't any wetlands on the property.
I understand that. You're going too far. They stated, unless I heard them incorrectly, they didn't have a wetland permit because they didn't have any wetlands on the property in 2015.
But it was the surface area.
You say they did. That's all that matters. But so, Ed, you were going to say?
And just, just, just so they, they've been repeating this, 20,000. No, it's 10,000. Once you already have 20,000 square feet of coverage, if you go, if you're going to expand over 10,000, then it trips another wetland permit. So, it wasn't 20, it was 10. Now, I mean, now you're 10. And that goes forward. By the way, anything more you want to do on this property, you're going to need another wetland permit for more surface area. Okay. If you have any left, I don't know, if you maxed it out. All right, while Ian's up there, Ian, could you help? I was talking to Megan earlier today. Could you explain for me and the commission, a little confusion about the wet bottom basin on the west, which the photograph went out in my environmental planners' report on Friday of this basin? Okay, that's what we're talking about, this wet bottom. You can see the sedges that Ian was talking about in the bottom. Okay. There's a few things that I just want ironed out. One is, you said in your, I asked for a statement about impacts of the proposal on this basin, and you said there weren't going to be any impacts. Because, I'm paraphrasing, but nothing's being done to the basin, so there aren't any impacts or something like that.
The functionality of them is not changing. At the end of the day, they're going to function exactly as they function today, except that it's increasing in size.
Okay. But there's more than functionality, okay? There's impacts that are beyond functionality, okay? So, could you, right now, could you tell us about the other impacts to this wetland? Or it was also confusing in your report, you said water course, because it's a water body, or it's a wetland, there's, I guess it's.
I guess generally for the commission's edification, if you were to go to site, it's kind of pretty cut and dry and simple. There are two basins that if you were to walk down in there, there's about an inch of standing water and a bunch of wetland sedges and grass. It's kind of stancy and you say, okay, this looks like a little man-made wetland. The other two features, one is a two-foot-wide ditch that's two feet deep, that's got riprap on both ends. It's chock full of mugwort that looks like it needs to be weed whacked. And if you were to look at it, it's bone dry, has little water exchange in it, you would say to yourself, you know, what does this function as? The sand filter area here, if you were to go to it, it sits about three feet higher. I'm just, you know, by eye, the optics of it, sits about three feet higher in grade than the two wet basins. And again, you go down in there, it's sandy, you know, filled material. And again, it's just mugwort that, you know, they don't get a mower down into. So, you know, optically, they're two very different things. The reason these two features are not regulator wetlands are, they do not contain hydroic soils. They do not contain hydrophytic vegetation. The other two man-made features, one could argue that they, you could argue it one way or the other, it's semantics, whether it's a wetland because you believe it has what they call aquic soils. You know, basically, the soil conditions are, create anaerobic conditions that are free of dissolved oxygen long enough to create, you know, a community of wetland or have the ability to support wetland plant communities in these two areas where, you know, these two functions clearly do not. And in terms of, you know, is that ditch a water course? The sole source of hydrology is coming from the parking lot. So, you know, proceeding after, you know, 24 hours after a rain event, that thing's bone dry again. You know, it's serving to convey the flow to the wet basins and to the infiltration. I was just noting offhand, in my opinion, being how dry those two areas are right now, I didn't know if they necessarily functioned. And that's why I felt that the improvements of the project provided an opportunity to come in to fix the situation. So, this treatment train was operating completely properly. The site was getting the proper recharge. And the overall, when the constructability is done, you're going to wind up with a bigger basin, more infiltration, more treatment. And again, as, you know, the engineer had said, what you're getting is a design that's now compliant with today's guidelines as opposed to 2015. So, you know, again, this design takes into consideration all the storm events, those bigger intensity events. So, I think that's an important, better thing overall for the watershed.
So, Ian, I'm sorry. What I was referring to, if you could just talk about impacts, and there might be no impacts, but the impact of putting a berm at the same elevation of the bottom of this wet basin, the western basin, and the impact of that wet bottom basin receiving the outflows from your temporary sediment trap. Those are two impacts. I'm not saying they're horrendous, but they, you said there were no impacts. That is an impact of some sort.
I don't disagree that, I guess that is a survey engineering exercise in terms of what the raw numbers are. But at the end of the day, you're talking about temporarily impacting a man-made water quality feature.
Yes, yes.
So, I would be in the opinion that if they're temporary impacts, they're de minimis.
Yes.
And that they holistically do not change anything conceptually about the design. And at the end of the day, it's a net benefit.
Okay. I just wasn't sure from, because you didn't write.
All right, let's move on, Erin.
That the sediment basin, the trap basin went in there, the sediment trap water went in there.
Sure.
I didn't know if you knew that.
Understood. I agree.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions, comments? So, we're going to, motion to table till next week, next month?
I just, the comment that I have no issue with this application at this time. In other words, there's, as far as I'm concerned, there's.
Entertaining a table till next month?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 25-5.1 to Research Parkway, Connecticut Food Share Incorporated be tabled until next month.
Excuse me. Is there a reason for tabling the application?
Didn't you submit information after Friday that came in this week? Did you send out information this week on this application?
No.
Nothing came this week on this application?
I've been talking to them a lot, but no, nothing was sent.
Chairman, all of our application and revised plans were submitted last week, prior to Friday, on Friday. Additionally, the revisions that happened prior to our plans that were initially submitted, no engineering design changes were made. It was just clarification, additional leaders listing out the basins, what is to be modified, what's not to be modified, and some revisions to the regulated area impacts plan.
When did you send, when did that all come out?
That came, was delivered to Town Hall on Friday.
On Friday. So, that was in the packet? All that information was packet? There's, am I, did we get any emails, anything on this over the weekend?
Mr. Chairman, the emails that we got were regarding South Cherry Street and Woodhouse, sorry, Woodhouse Avenue and South Cherry Street.
Okay, I'm mistaken. I'm sorry. I apologize. We'll withdraw that motion to table till next month.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay. So, now we'll entertain a motion regarding this application.
Do you need a significant activity motion?
Yes. Thank you, Kathy.
I'm asking.
Yes, yes. So, yes, significant activity. Kathy reminded us.
All set now?
We have to do significant activity.
Entertain a motion regarding significant activity.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 25-5.1 to Research Parkway, Connecticut Food Share Incorporated be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, any? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Now, we're entertaining a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 25-5.1 to Research Parkway, Connecticut Food Share Incorporated be approved as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Application A 25-5.260 Schoolhouse Road, Mario Yepes?
Oh, mine. I gave it to you, so it must be someplace.
Yes, sir. Mario Yepes? We got to talk into microphone so they get you on record.
Thank you. Good evening. Mario Yepes, 60th Schoolhouse Road.
Okay. Erin, what's going on, Erin?
Okay. So, you got the application in your May packet. I'm sorry, this was received. You got the application on the dais at the meeting, the May meeting, the May 7th meeting. It was handed out that night, okay? So, it has a map of this property with, I worked with Mr. Yepes to put all these improvements that he wants to do on his property. The reason this came to my attention is Commissioner Reynus saw that there was a pile of brick, a pile of broken bricks in, by the pond. This is a beautiful, huge pond. And you could see it from the Schoolhouse Road. So, I went to investigate, and it was sitting there, you know, oh, I don't know, 35 feet from the pond or something. Of course, it, well, we found out it did originate from 67th Schoolhouse. Anyway, Mr. Yepes has told me, am I pronouncing it right, by the way, Mario?
I'm sorry?
Yepes?
Yes.
Yepes, okay.
Yes.
That told me that since then, since our initial conversation, he doesn't like this pile of bricks. He thought it'd be dirt, and it's not. It's bricks mixed with dirt. You know the material I'm talking about. So, he's decided to get rid of that. He's not going to use it. And also, I wanted the Southwest Conservation District to go out. And he, we were in communication, they're very busy, they couldn't get there in time for this meeting. But because it's such a beautiful pond, and he wants to do some, there's erosion on, right on the edge of the pond, and I thought some technical assistance was in order, something beyond what I could suggest. So, but they're too busy to get out. So, I said, so, but he wants to do some work this summer. So, I said, okay, maybe tonight, something can, some of this proposal can happen tonight. And the more technical part maybe has to wait. So, we had a discussion today, and I'll let Mr. Yepes tell you what he would like to do that is, can be done by a homeowner and doesn't need a contractor. I have photographs, if you want to see photographs.
Good evening again, and thank you for having me. I've been owning that property for more than 20 years. I am a very simple person. I just want to, there is a path already around the pond on my property. The pond has three owners. I own three-quarters of the pond. And I, I made a path with rocks, pavers. And I have more pavers, and I did want to, where is dirt only on the path? I want to put more, my God, I just said it, I'm sorry, pavers on. So, it looked nice. The difference between my side of the pond and the other owners is that they are in line with the water. The side where I am is about four, five feet above the pond. So, it won't damage anything, but it will look nice. We just did an extension in the house. We had a beautiful deck that we want. My wife and I, we just want to enjoy it, the view, and see the ducks, the thurles, the lily pads, and all the animals that go around. I plan to do many things, but I would like to start making, finishing the path, putting some, taking out the dirt, the two piles that I have there that they were useless, and put some grass in it so that will look nice. That's the only thing I want to do up to now. Later on, I may do something else in the property. Thank you for listening.
So, what are we asking to do here, Erin? What's the, what's the request? I mean, what do we, what do we, what's he requesting?
Okay, I could show you the pictures. The first request was big. Now, it's been reduced much, much, okay? So, he wants to, he's got a, he's got a path, an old path, I don't know, a 20-year-old path or whatever, right on the edge of the pond that has some bricks, old bricks. And he wants to continue the old bricks for the next 30 feet. In other words, this path exists. He's not making a new path. The path exists, but 30 feet of it or so is just dirt and wants to make it brick. I don't think you have the pictures. I'm not sure. No, no pictures, right? Do you want me to pass the pictures?
You can pass them out.
Okay. So, that's the first thing he wants to do, is finish that. Then he wants to, where it's ugly with dirt coming down, he wants to plant grass seed. Originally, he had a big idea to change the whole slope in the backyard, but he's backed off on that for now. That's one thing he wants to do. That's one thing he wants to do, yes.
That's one thing, that's one thing this requested this application.
Yes. Then there's an old funky metal cyclone fence he wants to get rid of, 'cause it's an eyesore, right at the edge of the pond. I don't know, it probably was there before you bought the place, right, Mr. Yepes? I don't know.
I'm sorry?
Was that cyclone fence there when you got the?
The fence, you mean?
Yeah, the old fence.
No, no, I put that.
Okay, but you, you think it's ugly, you wanna go?
No, I wanna take that out.
Yeah.
I wanna, that, that, I wanna take that out, too.
And then in some of the pictures, you'll notice the, the property, as he said, falls down very steeply to the pond, and as a result, it gets eroded. So, my idea was to what they call lay it back, bring it back on a nice slope, and I think that's what, I've been taught by the Southwest Conservation District on other properties, that's what you do when you have a bad slope, you bring it back, and then it stops eroding. So, but that's a, that's like a, a big project with a contractor. I don't think Mr. Yepes can undertake that himself, is my idea. So, he would like to just put grass in for the summer, just to, just to dress it up for the summer. And the little brick path, and remove the ugly cyclone fence, and get rid of the brick piles, which you see in the, in the, in the photographs, get rid of those. Not the nice, you'll see on the, there's an old basketball court, is it, Mr. Yepes? That asphalt there, is that basketball?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, he has a pile of very nice bricks, those very nice bricks that he got somewhere else, he'd like to put on a path by the pond. But the broken, the broken bricks mixed with the dirt, he wants to get rid of that.
Erin, uh...
Off-site.
Erin, is it by law that that pond has to have a fence around it at least four foot high?
I don't, that's an interesting point, Nick, I don't know. I would have to look into that, I've never heard that. But you're saying for child's safety?
I just hate to see him tear it down and have to put it back up because there's a regulation or a law that says he has to have a fence around the pond.
I, I, I gotta be honest with you, sir, there are many things that I don't know. I am a foreigner. I've been learning, Ms. O'Hair has been so kind with me that she's been teaching me many things that I thought it was okay to do, and she's been telling me, no, 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 and, and I, I didn't know. That is why I offer that I will take the, the fence out. Anything that I need to do, I will do. I, I am a very simple person. I just wanna have something nice. My wife and I, we have four grandchildren, and we want for them to go, when they go and visit, we can go and enjoy it, the view, the pond, and the things that we have around. And that's why we wanna create a nice environment for them to, to be there. We have no family here. It's only us and my two children, their, and their families. And I just wanna do something nice for them and for us. And if I have, like I said, if I, whatever I need to do, I will do it. Please help me.
Okay, Erin, what's the, what's the language if this is, this is an actual application? This isn't a violation, no remediation, application, correct?
Except for the brick pile. But Mr. Yepes didn't know, he couldn't just deposit a brick pile.
And your recommendation here is to vote yes on this application?
Well, not the whole thing, 'cause he doesn't wanna do the whole thing. So, it'd be a partial approval tonight, would be nice to put in his, to dress up his little path that always, already exists, but to dress up an existing footpath at the side of the pond, that'd be part of it, to remove the cyclone fence, which is on here, right? He doesn't wanna remove these two, those old trees that, the photograph, he, he wanted to, but now he doesn't, he's not gonna do that, no. He just wants to dress up the little path and remove the cyclone fence and throw in some grass seed. Is that about it?
Yes.
Did I get that right, those three things?
Yes.
Okay, did, did you hear the three things? Hang on, Erin.
Yeah.
Did you hear the three things? Okay. Footpath, removal of the fence, and some grass.
Grass seed, yeah.
Was there one more?
No, that, that was it, but I, I have a suggestion for the alternative to the grass.
Go ahead.
So, instead of, in eventually cutting back that slope, if you were to plant native grasses and flowers, they have a deeper root system that they may stop the erosion better than, say, a lawn grass that, that would get kinda crazy and you'd have to mow and may still erode because grass, like grass for lawn, has a really shallow root system.
I, thank you for, for, for your advice. No, 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 I, I, I wanna do so many things, but in some way...
Okay, all right, we understand, thank you. Okay, so, if we, we were going to determine significant activity of this application, first of all, I think, Debbie, will you, what would be the motion to, if we were voting on the motion to approve or deny right now?
Um, we'd make a motion to allow those three things, get rid of the cyclone fence, dress up and continue the brick path, and then put in some grass seed.
Okay.
Can I add remove the brick pile, off-site, to that list?
What about it?
To remove the broken pile of bricks.
Isn't that part of it? Or, that, you want that in, in this conversation?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, sir.
In order to put the grass, I need to take those piles, sir. Those two piles of dirt and, and bricks. I wanna put grass in it, in there.
We're not going anywhere with this thing, let's get this thing under control. Is he, you're, she wants the brick to remove, the red brick to get out of there, is that correct?
Not the nice red brick, the nice red brick is for the path.
Come on, Erin, what, what red brick do you want to come out of there?
The brick from 67th Schoolhouse that got dumped there, so yes.
How do you know, how do you know which brick is which?
He knows, there's broken pieces, there's broken pieces mixed with dirt.
In the photograph, you can see the nice brick.
You say there's multiple assets to the, facets to this besides the three or four we're talking about tonight?
Yes, but he doesn't wanna spend the money right now to deal with the other ones.
Are you, are you going to eliminate the brick that got hauled in from the neighbors down the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We don't need to put that in a motion right now, we can or we can't. The point I'm trying to make is, is do the commissioners understand what a significant activity motion would be based on those three or four things? Okay? Okay? So, I'll entertain a motion to decide, to determine if this is a significant activity for those three or four things.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that A 25-5.260 Schoolhouse Road, Mario Yepes be deemed not a significant impact activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Nick?
No, the only discussion I had was if we deemed it significant, the applicant would have to spend a lot more money with environmental studies, habitat, and all that, so, and I don't believe it's needed in this case. He has, he has control and his hands-on of what he wants to do. So, I believe it's a non-significant activity.
So, you vote yes? Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny, and you might as well add that fourth.
Brick pile?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that A 25-5.260 Schoolhouse Road, Mario Yepes Yard Improvements be approved with these conditions of approval. One, to take care of dressing up or continuing the brick path at the side of the pond. Two, to get rid of the cyclone fence. Three, put in some grass seed. And four, remove the pile of broken bricks and dirt from the property.
You're in agreement, sir?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for a vote, Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Yes. You're all set.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
I'm sure Erin will be in touch with you. Okay, application A 25-5.3528 South Cherry Street, installation of All Next, installation of water line.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to speak with us today. My name is Amber Lee Clark. I'm a licensed environmental professional and a project manager with WSP USA Inc., that's an environmental consultant. We are here representing All Next USA. To my right is Ms. Virginia Ryan, she's a Safety, Health, and Environmental Manager at All Next in Wallingford. The proposed activities that are associated with this application at the subject property, 528 South Cherry Street in Wallingford, include rerouting a non-potable industrial water line that is used by the facility for processed water. The current water line is located in the footprint of an area at the site that will require environmental cleanup in the future, and that cleanup will include the installation of a engineered control or engineered cover system. The realignment of the water line will place the water line outside of the footprint of that proposed area for cleanup, which will allow the water line to be maintained without future disturbances for that cover system. WSP conducted a wetland delineation in 2024 at the site, which is included in the application, and this design was chosen because it specifically avoids any alteration to wetland or water courses, as it only will impact temporarily the upper, upland review area. Restoration of the upland review area will be conducted in accordance with Connecticut's Department of Energy and Environmental Protection's guidance on soil erosion and sediment control.
That's it?
I wanted to keep it brief.
Wise decision. Don't you already have a major environmental site there that's been covered over and permitted on the site? Right now, you're gonna take that out of there, you think? Is that what you're indicating?
The, the engineer control, or the, the cover system?
The sys, well, you, you have an existing system that you've, you've dealt with on, on site. Is that coming out? Is that being taken out of there?
Uh, no, this is a former landfill, this portion of the site is a former landfill that will require an additional cover system. The landfill's no longer used, and it's not...
It was, it's your own private landfill?
Uh, yes, it's a private landfill.
Okay. Colin, got any, Nick, any questions?
Is this the, the area that...
Pardon me, if you could speak up, the system's interfering.
What?
Mr. Kern, if you could speak up, the system is interfering.
Okay, well, my voice is gone, so I'll speak a little heavier. Is this the site a few years back that we were gonna approve of removing a half a million yards of sandy fill?
Email.
To put a, put a project in there? Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Is this the area that they were gonna remove a half a million yards of sand out of there across from the Suzie Old Sand Plant to make the site usable?
No, this is, I'm sorry, excuse me, this is not the same area. It's the same address, it's the same property, but where this li, water line is being asked to be relocated is a different portion of the site.
How far would you say you are from the Quinnipiac River to where you wanna actually perform this construction? You know where the Quinnipiac River is?
Yes, the Quinnipiac River is off of this figure that you see up here to the southwest. There is a unnamed stream that you're seeing in the northern part of this that runs into the Quinnipiac, so it, it is, I'd have to, I'd have to measure it out, but it's not right up against the Quinnipiac River.
Okay, and you, you will not be removing any materials from the site?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Debbie?
No questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Jeff?
No questions.
Jimmy?
No question.
Please, Ally?
I have nothing.
Caroline?
No, thank you.
You were here in the beginning and heard my speech about literature that's coming in after the packet. I'm gonna leave it up to the commission to act, if they wanna act on this tonight or not. Does the commission wanna act on this tonight?
Well, I wanna know from Erin why, anything we received after last Friday on this project, uh, application, was there anything that we received? You emailed us stuff?
Yes, I emailed it the night of June 3rd, which was...
Yesterday.
And here it, and I handed it out tonight, I believe. My site visit with them was on Friday to see the place.
So, it sounds like to me we need to get back to, everything must go through the proper, proper paperwork things for the, for us to get it to Friday before the meeting of the Wednesday. Today, this is a perfect example that we didn't get this in time to study it with the rest of the application. So, my suggestion is, I feel as though we should deny this till next month, and, and we want it on paper. So, if you can't get it to us by Friday, then once, in the meeting before Wednesday, then I, it's not gonna be accepted. This will be the first case that we have done this, because this should've never got this far, this should've ended months ago. So, I, I feel as though this should be denied till next month, so we can just put it all together and review it as one application, and not wait till the 11th hour. Because you, in your email, you promised me other, other emails I never got today. So, I wanna, I wanna discontinue this email with me. If you can't put it on paper or give it to me before Friday of the meeting for Wednesday, it's not gonna be accepted, as far as I'm concerned. But I'm just one of seven or nine votes, so, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Well, I...
If I may, this application was on the receipt for new applications in May. It's, it's just, it was a challenge getting Erin out to do a site visit, 'cause, you know, she had some stuff going on. But we've been in constant communication for the past, I'd say, three or four weeks, and she's been a huge help for this application. And it would be, it would be very helpful if we could get this approved, because the, the water line will need to be replaced during a very short 10-day shutdown period for the facility, which is in late August. So, we're, we're, we just would like you to reconsider, if you could.
But you, you see, yes, you wanted to get the project done.
Of course.
And we, we sit here and volunteer basis, and it's all this help, just go through every, every month. It doesn't help us to get this stuff emailed this morning, and best part of it is, instead of coming over email like this, it came over sideways. So, I'm, you know, trying to look in the computer to read that way. So, I don't know how else, other than to take the position, not accepted. I know, I know you may have been in contact with her every day, but for her to mail this out yesterday is not fair to us.
Completely understood, yeah.
So, can I entertain a motion to table this application?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application A 25-5.3528 South Cherry Street be tabled.
Your second?
When?
Next meeting.
Till when?
Till the next meeting.
Which is?
I don't remember the date.
July 30th, 'cause we don't meet in August.
Right. Till on July 30th.
Motion made, is your second?
Second.
Call for any other discussion? Call for a vote, Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. New applications are pretty straightforward. There is one here, though, app, the number four, Erin, 256.3287 Hall Avenue, Town of Wallingford. Where is this? This is the footbridge over, around Community Lake?
Yes.
Down on Community Lake?
Oh, well, well, it's in the middle of the woods, you can't see it from the Community Lake Park, you have to hike into the woods to see it.
Okay, what's the status on Farm Hill Detention Pond?
The, it's, the mayor gave it to the town planner to get a consultant to work on it. to get a consultant to work on it.
All right. Okay, violations 14 Brookview Avenue, is that, is that up and running? Is that trained out?
For receipt of new applications, F1234. Did you just say you accepted them for the next meeting?
Thank you, Kathy.
I, I can't hear you.
Pardon me, this F, receipt of new applications that you just went through, 1234, are you considering that they are accepted to be received for the next meeting agenda?
Yes.
Okay, I want that confirmation. Thank you.
Brookview, the block wall that went into the Brooks, is that up and running? Is that all stable?
I haven't been out there, been a little busy.
Woodhouse Avenue, we know about. Ceasance Desist, we know about. Kandraki Lane, you're waiting on just a couple items with them? You said driveway crossing?
Do, I mean, I could talk at length about it.
No, I don't want length. I'm just saying, maybe it's a yes or no answer.
I'm waiting for them, they have an owner, a new owner, they're selling it, and I, that's what's happening.
Okay, Schoolhouse Road, 67 Schoolhouse? Any, anything pending there?
Actually, we talked, we talked last week, and she's not ready. I mean, it's all, it's a lake. So they didn't take the silt fence out or whatever because it's a lake. They can't get back there.
Okay, now, number three, I Am The Walrus. Have you reviewed the plantings that she said that have been planted based on a year ago's...
They haven't all been planted. I think that's why they haven't asked me out there to look yet. They got to plant them.
All right, some of them have been planted?
Some of them were planted and died because we had a drought in November, so that's no good. They got to plant them again.
Okay, number four, Old Colony, that stays the same. Isn't that something to do with planting and zoning on that issue also?
That is a way bigger fill, fill on the planting and zoning side than on our side. But there is a lot of fill on our side, too. Yeah.
67 Ceasance Desist with Carl Kleisler, that's not changed.
I do want to comment, Chair, Mr. Chairman. I, we haven't had a chance to talk about this, but I think that there should be outside consultants to deal with these violations that have been dragging on because I don't have the time.
I'm not sure I agree with that. So number six is Maplewood Avenue. What is she's doing? Anything?
Yes, she keeps on putting grass on her back berm area, and I get complaints from the neighbors.
Well, I think somewhere that's going to erupt. How about number seven?
That's okay. Yeah, number seven's good.
Is that ready to be eliminated on this list?
Yeah, I haven't talked to him, but he doesn't, he might be here tonight if he knew. But no, that's fine. It can be lifted if you want to.
We can take that violation off?
As far as I'm concerned, yes.
That, yes?
Yes. I haven't told him that, but yes.
Okay, so do you need a motion to take that off?
Sure.
Entertain a motion for taking, removing number seven?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove the notice of violation on 119 Quigley Road, Matt Turner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Motion made, is any discussion? Call for vote. Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Are we in all agreement that from here on out, we will not receive emails sideways, upside down, or whichever way we get them? And everything will be provided to us by Friday for the following Wednesday meeting? Or am I the only one that feels threatened by it? Because like today, you said you were going to send me, try to get another email to me by early afternoon, which I never received. And the one I did get from you, the first one, was, it was 90 degrees. It wasn't upright, it was 90 degrees. So am I the only one that has a problem with this? Or is the rest of the chair?
I have a problem with it. It was 90 degrees, I had, I couldn't read it, and I didn't print it. And that's, I had too many other things to do today to fool around with crooked emails and that stuff.
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing about this sideways thing. I will talk to the IT department and see why the scanner makes it sideways. I didn't know what was coming out sideways, I'm sorry. And as far as the other thing, yes. I was out sick for an entire week, I don't know if you guys know that, with the viral COVID thing. So that set me back. But what I do, I hope you realize this, I try at the end to get these things approved. I know my, the applicants want to get approved. So that's why I try my damnedest, but I can just hold back and table it. If, I don't choose to do that. I try not to table things, but...
Well, then, then you've got to spend your time more accurately to get it done in time. But you rush to do this, and you put these conditions of approval on, that only postpones this application, and it doesn't allow you to take care of the ones that came in. You're always behind the staple. So when you have conditions of approval, do you just say, well, it's all set now? You've got to administer the conditions of approval that get on it, on that.
You mean from two months ago, three months ago? Well, we approved a few months ago, yes, when they start. I have to go out there and check and make sure every... It's a lot of work to keep all this going on, yes.
Well, then you need to talk to purchasing and have them hire you an assistant.
I, I think, I get your reference, excuse me, for what you just meant. You meant if we table it another month, then maybe there will only be one condition of approval instead of 10. I think that's what you're saying, because it can be folded in, all the conditions.
I mean, you can't, they say...
Okay, all right, I get it.
All Next says that you, they've been in direct contact with you, but yet it takes till the day before the meeting to get the report out from it. I mean, I'll tell you for a fact, the city of New Haven, I had an application in, and they just said, we didn't have time to look at it this month, and that was it.
Oh.
It wasn't that they pushed, they didn't push it through. They didn't have this confusion, they just tough wait. So it's a question of managing your time and getting the reports in order, and get the people in order, and return the questions. And maybe you should shut off your email, and all these, you said that all these people are bothering you with email. Shut it off. Take care of business. I mean, that's a lot of that, I'm not saying the emails are not business. Cut it down. Okay, guys?
More tabling, okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.